Well, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call the meeting to order at six P M. And we're gonna begin with the pledge of allegiance. Alright, pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the public for which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, uh, the warrants and bills all been signed?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, um, approved of tonight's agenda.
Make motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes and minutes of last meeting.
I mean, can we prove these minutes at the last meeting?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes and that leads us to the town administrator weekly update.
Alright, just a couple items for you. Uh, first is some training that the code officer, code department has lined up. Uh, the first one is on September twenty fifth. It's for basic and advanced erosion control practices. It is an all-day event, so the office will be closed on September twenty fifth. Code enforcement office. The second training is on September eleventh. Uh, it's just a couple of hours in the morning for, um, an introduction to building science. So, uh, based on the timing of that one, they are gonna open the office probably around three o'clock. So, everything we've posted on the website, those are some training that both the deputy and the code officer are going to. Um, also regarding the code department, there'll be no planning board meeting tomorrow night, as I understand that they have no agenda items. Last week, I spoke to about the town report and I reached out to Mark Roy as we discussed, um, and kind of, you know, reminded him of our conversation. And he did say that yes, there were several reports that he could do to make, to meet state statute. We looked at Title thirty together to make sure that we would be in compliance. Um, and one thing that, that he was aware of, but, um, personally, I'm not sure it's the direction the board wants to go in, but you can have all of his reports in there, but you also have to have the most recent audited, um, report. So what you would be doing is, when he would recommend is you run, you put last year's audit in there in addition to this year's, you know, non-audited numbers. I said, you know, I mean, at this point, A, we'd be running the same one, B, let's just wait. Exactly, yeah. Uh, so we told him, we appreciate it, but we'll stick with the regular process, since that's a requirement. Um, and then a short sheriff's department log for you for the month of August. August first, deputy reported a suspicious vehicle with Vermont plates in a ditch on Gulf Road in Chapeli. Uh, indicated that there were several calls about this and they were eventually able to locate the driver and took them into custody. August seventh, deputies were dispatched to a working code at the public boat ramp located at Emory Mills in Chapeli. Uh, vi- victim suffered, um, some type of cardiac infraction and they attempted to provide life-saving measures. Unfortunately, the subject was pronounced dead later at the emergency room. August tenth, deputy Sam Moore recovered a stolen vehicle at Grady's Boat Launch in Acton. The Fairfield Police Department listed the vehicle as being stolen, um, from their town, from a fifty-three-year-old male. Uh, they eventually were able to locate that individual. On August tenth, deputy Sam Board summons a thirty-seven-year-old from Acton for violating conditional rights after locating him in Chapeli. August tenth, deputies responded-
Excuse me, what are conditional rights?
Uh, some sort of-
I've never heard that.
Conditions from his, um, release. I don't know, just violations of his conditions.
Okay.
No, let me, yeah, like, you can't go near somebody or you can't be out of the time-
Violation of conditions, conditions of a release, so he must not release for certain conditions.
Yeah.
Um, August tenth, deputies responded to a home in Chapeli for a report of a female that said she was sexually assaulted. Uh, calls were taken and the female was brought into the hospital for exam. The investigation is ongoing. August fifteenth, interview was adopted at the Kittery Police Department with the victim of the sexual assault investigation. Where the report conduct occurred approximately twenty years ago in Acton. The case is being coordinated with the Greenland Police Department. Twenty years ago. I'm gonna assume that's not tied to five days prior, different sexual assault. August sixteenth, deputies responded to a sudden death complaint at a home on H Road in Acton. An eighty-one-year-old male was found deceased by a neighbor. No foul play is sus- suspected. August sixteenth, deputies responded to a sudden death complaint at a home on Hopper Road. Fifty-six-year-old male was deceased. Nothing suspicious. August eighth, deputies stopped a vehicle in Chapeli and charged a twenty-three-year-old from limit operating without a license. August twenty-second, deputy Carr responded to a report of an ATV on Chapeli Corner Road, near Goose Pond Road, parked at the edge of the road. Apparently, the deputy ran the numbers on the ATV, but didn't get a response. They entered the ATV. It looked like it had come to a gradual stop, had mechanical failures and a tow was called to the scene and recovered the ATV. August twenty-third, deputies responded to a home on Route one oh nine for a sudden death complaint. Ninety-four, ninety-four-year-old female was found deceased by a healthcare provider. Subject had a D N R in place. Nothing suspicious. August twenty-third, deputy Frazier investigated domestic at a home on Potty Road in Chapeli. Sixty-six-year-old from Sanford was arrested for D V assault. August twenty-fourth, deputy Marshall investigating a vandalism complaint on Goose Pond Road in Chapeli and Acton. Caller reported that both speed trailers on Goose Pond Road were vandalized overnight, with each trailer tipped over into the ditch. While the trailers seem to be in working condition, they need to be evaluated. The board was made aware of that. August thirtieth, deputy Jones charged a twenty-four-year-old with, of Acton, criminal speed in Emory Mills Road. And then the last one, August thirty-first, deputies responded to a vehicle crash on Hopper Road. The operator was traveling west on Hopper Road in a black Harley. Subject failed to negotiate a turn, went off the roadway, was ejected from the motorcycle. Uh, lifeline to Portland, life-threatening injuries, speed was a factor. It should also be noted that this same operator was stopped and summoned for criminal speed several hours before crash. That's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you very much. Uh, next we move on to Lee's and update, starting with Ed.
Hi, Ed.
Okay, and then we can move on to John. Okay, and Tom?
I'm set, thank you.
And David?
Uh, talked to Ronden the other day, they're finishing up.
Oh, nice.
Um, so they called me. And so they're finishing up and wanted to know what we wanted to do on the parking lot, finish parking lot. Um, they told me where they were. They're against gravel town and this and that, but all the slopes, the riprap and this and that. So, um, what I did is I asked them to take the plans that they've been given them, that we give them on the CAD program, whatever. And give us some Bryson, what's it cost to finish it? So, and then presented to us, so, um, so they're getting another plan for us now. And, um, Mr. Dennis is still doing a great job. All these, all they're working right now.
Looking great.
And, uh, other than that, I don't think I got anything.
Awesome. Some really good and exciting updates. Actually, it's been a while to get to that parking lot, so I'm really excited to hear.
Yeah. Done.
Be, you know, I wanna see, you know, the numbers and see what we got from them to do it, but, uh, they said they have some extra reclaim from the road project that they can put on the parking lot and this and that.
They're gonna do what he's in with the Yerkes Park lot?
They're supposed to. They told me they were gonna put some reclaim up there, fix it up. So, um, I'll do an inspection on it this weekend, see how, how they're doing.
Um, the only updates that I have is that, um, I have set a, uh, by, we've been meeting with the rec director. I'm just checking and helping in any way. Um, they're still looking for members to join the rec committee. I think this is a really great opportunity to join the board. The rec director and the current members have a great plan for this program. If you really wanna help build it up, I think now is a good time to join. So please reach out to the rec director or the town administrator if you're interested in joining this committee. Um, and that is all I have. Um, with that, we will move on to department head and committee chair updates. Are there any department head or committee chairs here? We will move into business, going, talking about the changes in fund balance. I think that is Tom.
Great. Uh, you all have a copy of this schedule?
Yep.
This is a listing of our fund balances as prepared by Mark Roy, preliminary for the period ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-five. The, uh, primary reserve accounts are for the general fund for the town, which is two million four sixty-two. And the school, two million four thousand dollars. So that is four million four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Our total reserves are five point two million dollars. So, the listing here details out all of the other reserves. And I don't know when, maybe a year or so ago, we went through this listing and cleaned out a number of them. And so I thought it would be a good time, before the audit is over, I think we could probably transact, if we wanted to, some of these that could be. We wanna close them out. So, we can go over each of these. Some of them, we may need to do some further research. Uh, perhaps our col- among all the members here will, somebody will recall exactly what this fund is for or not. But if we don't have that information, turn our favor, maybe we could spend a little time going to look back further records. Some of these funds have been around for a very long time and, um, so I would be cautious about going back a great deal of time on some of these funds. If we don't know what they are, or if they haven't been used for a number of years, then um, we can talk about them individually, but we should keep in mind that maybe we should just go ahead and close them out. The first fund, Fund Thirty, is the Mary Grant Fund. Um, you can see, uh, the start of the year with three thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars. Had three hundred and forty-seven dollars in revenue, four hundred and ninety-one dollars in expenses, so they're down to three thousand three thirty-one. This is an active fund?
Yeah, I'm surprised that it's a, I guess this type of fund, as I understand what these are, because that's their operating, that's their, you know, fundraising money goes in there, their expenses go in there. This is their actual fund, this is their-
Okay, so do, do they have an operating budget?
I believe this is it.
Does any, none of this comes from the town?
That's right.
So that's why it's here?
Cause they were like a separate-
Because it's not appropriated money?
So that's, yeah, this, they don't appropriate any money.
This is their, their operating accounts, so we should just move on?
Yes.
Private Road Association Fund?
It's the Article forty-three that you pay in and out of.
Okay, it had a balance of six thousand eight forty-two.
Right.
And that's with a transfer in of nine thousand. Is that the money that was approved in, in April or whenever?
Yep.
Okay, good.
So that much would stay, right?
The Recreation Fund, uh, thirty thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. Uh, no activity in the current year, so beginning and end balance is the same.
Right, so this is-
That's, me, the fund would be pulled out of the, do the field, correct?
That, yes.
Yes.
So is this, uh, was this a special article that was-
Well, there were, for a few years in a row, there was, the rec articles, and don't quote me on this, basically said, you know, and we, we raised appropriated money for some different projects. Parking lot, I think the, um, the playground got dissolved because of that previous-
I think that maybe further down the playground, so I think it's-
Shouldn't be.
I think, I think a couple of years, the playground was dissolved.
But the way we looked into the playground, the way that it was written in the article, it dissolved.
The way, the way we wrote it out, I specifically did it this way, was, and I helped the rec director at the time do it, was to word it so that we could use it for anything.
Okay, cause I thought after two years, I thought there was like a timeline that I-
I'm mistaken. This is, uh, there isn't a separate playground account, so. Um, so this, this money is intended for the parking lot?
Well, pretty much that's what we, we were talking about, explaining the parking lot. That's when the playground kind of got threw in at the same time. We put it on that, so parking lot, yeah.
So, at this stage, what do we think this money would likely be used for?
Parking lot.
Parking lot, did, now, is this the, the main parking lot or the, the new cleared area?
The new cleared area. It doesn't really matter. I mean, the way we had it worded, it was pretty much a parking lots. So, and the rec field and all that, so, um, and right now, I, I believe that's probably what we'll end up needing to use to finish it.
Okay, alright. Um, and that's where you may use reclaim material?
Yeah, well, they gotta do the rip wrapping, lower all the slopes, final grade, all that, yeah.
And, and the original parking lot, nothing to be done to that?
No, they're supposed to fix that up for using it, cause they, they kinda messed it up.
Yeah.
It's not horrible, yeah.
Yeah, supposedly told me they were gonna spend some reclaim on it.
Great.
So I believe that'll probably be spent out.
Okay, great. Um, four hundred and eighty dollars for a forestry fund. Was this left over from?
So this, this was spent at the Ableton meeting, so effective July first, it's gone. That's zeroed out.
Okay, very good, alright. Fire department grant funds, started at fifteen thousand three hundred. Revenue of sixty-six thousand nine nine nine, expenses of sixty-six thousand six eighty. So basically, revenue expenses are about the same, ending up with fifteen thousand six nineteen. Uh, it looks like it was originally grants. I wonder if maybe we got a grant and didn't end up charging the expenses associated with the grant to discount.
Possible, let the research out.
Can we check with Wayne on that? And, uh, see if he knows what it is and if there is no, um, I'll call it legal call on that money. If he took money and haven't spent it for the intended purpose, I don't think there's any of that in there, but just having-
Probably just coded wrong.
Yeah, had, so we should, we should close it out.
So, if you take it out of like the operating budget, start thinking about that.
Yeah, we should, we should.
Yeah, we should be able to reclaim it.
So if he can't come up with a reason as to why this should be retained, we should just move it into, um, undesignated funds. Uh, is, does that require a town vote to do that, or probably, I would say it's an accounting correction.
I think it depends on how the fund was originally set up. That's what we found for the corporation, so let's get some history on it.
We'll get a little more, okay, very good. Fire Department Donation Fund, um, started with two thousand five eighty-six, ended with two thousand two fifty-one. Not a lot of activity, twenty-five dollars in income. Maybe when you're talking with Wayne, let's find out what is intended. If, if these were funds, uh, indicated for a particular purpose, or the, I'm sorry? No.
If you have a comment to say, just meant to come to the program where we ask for public comment, otherwise, please keep it to yourself so that people can hear what is being discussed and we can hear of all select board members.
So let's check with Wayne on this and find out what is intended to be, so there's no reason to leave these things laying around. Conservation Committee Fund?
Zeroed out.
Zeroed out, great. Neighbors Helping Neighbors, um, that's a very active fund, so we'll leave that one as it is unless there's other concerns there. I don't think so. Lincoln School of Donation Fund, uh, Ed, is this what you were thinking about leaving for the windows?
Yeah, we'll need, we'll need that and probably a little more, so within the next few years, that one will have some activity.
Veteran Cemetery Fund, uh, no activity, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollar balance.
I believe we did, uh, we did spend down one of the vet, one of the cemetery accounts at town meeting in April, I believe it was this one. I'll have to check the article. And we zeroed out another one, yes.
July first, okay. Uh, Earn Paid Leave Fund, twenty-five thousand dollars. This is, uh, basically a, a satisfied for the liability of earned paid leave?
Right, well, we have a policy that, remember we talked about this this year, budget season, we lowered it because we have a policy that says it has no cash value to the employees, earned paid time. So we need to really take another look at this fund, because if it has no-
There's no vested benefits there?
No, no. I mean, they can-
By vested, they mean they don't have a legal right to be paid anything?
Right, not at, no, it's not like P T O times.
Well, if that's the case, it should be closed out.
Well, we already dropped this one, at least twenty-five thirty.
We did, but we still hadn't spent anything. So we didn't appropriate much money this year because we found out that it had no cash value. But the department has, can still hit against it, should they, you know, because we have plenty of staff that has E P L time. So if you have a, a per diem that's earning E P L and they decide to take a day, they can collect E P L and be paid for that shift. They need to be paid out of this E P L account and not out of the regular salary account. If they're using E P L time, that's what the money-
Earn paid leave is E P L.
How much do we normally use a year of that?
Well, they haven't spent anything since we started it two years ago. That's what I'm saying.
They probably typically be able to cover that out of their operating, but I, I don't think you need this, but if you wanna look further at it, it's fine.
No, and if you look at, if you look at the, um, the listing in the hallway of all the employees that have E P L, I mean, let's just use the animal control officer, if he takes vacation time, if, if he says, you know, I'm, I'm going out of town for a week, he's still gonna get paid his salary because it's a salary position and stuff.
It's already, it's already figured in.
Okay.
Okay, so let's close it if we can. Capital Improvement Fund, forty-three thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars, no activity. Beginning and end balance the same.
Capital Improvement Fund, is that the town, that's not the town hall, is it?
I think that's an old, that's an old one that you've added to, but you have to come up with-
Go back, Jennifer, it's like three or four years and no activity, just close it out, unless you can-
Oh, yep, I missed it. I thought, I thought that was-
Okay. Um, Fire Department Capital Fund, eight thousand eight oh eight, no activity.
Is that the one who started, uh, probably ten years ago for truck replacement?
I'll have to research it.
So, sure sounds like it.
I think it is.
Okay, let's, let's see if we can close it out. Road Capital and L rap funds, forty-eight thousand three eighty-eight.
Same, we need to research it, um, because as, you know, as we know with the L rap funds are designated for something specific, and I think that we found out, um, previous treasurer that-
We didn't hit these accounts when we should.
We weren't hitting the right account, right? So we got reimbursed on the projects they did that qualified for L rap, should've been paid out of the L rap account.
Ambulance Fund, I'm sorry.
Then, none of that makes sense, because typically, the money that we get from the L rap goes right in there and doesn't need to fund, right? Always, always did. Then what we did is we, we, you know, well, whoever, myself, we'd go do our projects. Then we'd have to go in and put a list of where that money went. We were already paid for those. So that money usually disappears every year.
You get reimbursed, right, the year after, right? You fill out that form saying what work you did that qualified for L rap funds, and then you get reimbursed afterwards.
No, we get paid, normally on the L rap, we get paid a certain percentage from our excise tax. That's, they just give us that. We don't apply for it. They give us whatever they tell us.
We have to fill out a form every year.
But that form is just to make sure that it was, it was spent on those, on projects that makes us apply for. But we don't, we don't send in asking for that money. These things are what kinda makes.
No, 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 I know that, I understand that.
Okay, uh-
I'll, now-
This seems unnecessary.
I think it's, that's all, that amount is one year's worth, right? So I think it's just one year they, that it did-
No, maybe it is, but I thought this year was only thirty-some thousand dollars.
That's been there for a while.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, I think that's been there for several years.
That's from like a while.
Then they just did, when they did the work that qualified for L rap, like you said, when you paid it, they didn't pay it out of that account. Something, right?
No, that is not right at all. It, it never had its own account.
Somebody created one. I'm not the treasurer, so-
They put money in here and it may have just been for one year or whatever.
I think that somebody bought a random check in from L rap, they created this fund, and they never spent, yes.
And made accounts and didn't get applied into our general fund, okay.
But let me do some research and get to a better answer.
Ambulance Fund, five thousand five hundred and one. Where did this come from, do we know?
You know, I, I know I looked at, I'm not the treasurer, I don't know all this either.
I know there was, there was money assigned to how that we-
Is that the money we took, that was given to us when we took over the ambulance association?
I would have to do some research to find out.
That may be what that one is.
Were we working on an account there that they wouldn't allow us to, is that, is that it?
That's not it, no. Cause that got dumped in the unassigned fund. That's a small amount that, a thousand dollars in it that came up, that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, that one in the unassigned.
Acton Public Access TV.
This one was created in the last ten years, so this one was created by a previous director that wanted to build up money so that if, okay.
So that should be one, I think it-
That's not part of his operating budget?
No, it was for capital.
It's just, it's just- From the Bridge and Culver Capital Fund?
Yeah, that one's interesting.
Ninety-three thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars. It was an addition of four thousand two oh seven and expenditures of almost thirteen thousand dollars.
So, I thought we talked about this last year, we were gonna slash that, because the way we're doing it now is to get a capital project. You know, you get boom, 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 then he's got his job to make his money anyways. This money's in there and doing nothing.
Last year, you guys had a conversation, were this close to dissolving it on the spot, and the road commissioner came to the podium and talked to you guys about not knowing, remember anything about it? And he talked to you about it spending on the spot, you authorized expenditures out of, from some culvert-
It was ten thousand.
Guardrails, I'm sorry, guardrails.
But I thought after that, that was it.
Right, but they didn't, you haven't, they haven't addressed that.
Where did we take the guardrails from?
Out of this account.
Out of this account?
Yes.
So you're all set with this?
Yeah, it, it got done, it got done in the spring, and I thought the documentation was we were gonna do away with that.
Good, let's do it.
Me, I, I don't, I don't, that's what I thought, but we don't have it.
Town Hall Parking Lot Fund, um, it was eighty-five thousand, we spent thirty-one three.
They took the building down.
Took the building down, fifty-three thousand dollars, and we still have to do something with this parking lot.
We do.
So we'll leave that there. Pet Road Capital Fund?
So these are the, that's one of the road projects that you're giving now, what, two years in the time it's approved?
So that will be closed out when that, when that-
Pet Road should be this year.
That one was done as of June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five?
Yeah, that should've been done in the lot.
So assuming he didn't spend all that, that's an active balance that'll go into-
Okay.
Like the unassigned fund balance.
I'm sorry, uh, Dan Capital Fund, is this for the, uh, the Muslim dam or, or that committee?
That's for them, yes.
And, um, what are we using this for?
They, when you've been, um, for the select board member that's been on the committee, they asked for five thousand dollars for capital, but, but they haven't spent it yet. They've asked you two or three years in a row for the five thousand.
You know, I, I, I've seen people freak out when we overtax them and tax them on stuff we're not using. This kinda sounds silly that we're just throwing money into account that we can just-
Yeah, could, at, at one of the next meetings, could you ask it, or, just say we have a fund?
I don't know if you wanna tell us something about that.
Or ask me, I would ask, I would word in a sense to say, for the last three years, what have you spent on the capital, you know? And, if, they don't have any, if they haven't used it for previous years, and-
I was gonna say, cause the last meeting we did was to just do it down the tree removals, that was-
If it's sizable, they can do what everybody else does, and they can come to us with a request and we can put it on top of you.
Well, it, um, I believe in their budget request, there was a line for capital.
I will say, I will say made it at five thousand.
And they typically have, when they do that, a list of projects that they're gonna do. When I was on that committee, they never did them. Or if they did, they were just in the operating expense, and this money really wasn't necessary.
That's what worries me about it, is they, is they don't understand.
Well, there was also a situation where a lot of this stuff just got charged to Sanford's own accounts, and they never charged us back, so. Uh, I think that's what some of this is, so, uh, but if they, if they aren't asking for it, I just, uh, move on. Okay?
So what are we doing with that account?
Um, Dan's gonna see if there are any outstanding obligations for capital. I guess that's the way to ask it, and if there are none, we should close it out. Route one oh nine Ball Field Fund, twenty-two thousand six sixty.
That's probably the parking lot.
It said Ball Field.
I think the old one is. Yeah, that was a higher number. I think we're gonna look into this one, cause I think there was something there already. That, that ain't the right number. I know there's more than that in that account, for the parking lot, so.
Well, it, there was one we looked at earlier.
Yeah, thirty thousand, right, yeah.
Thirty thousand.
The rec fund, they have a thirty-six twenty.
I think it was the parking lot fund. That was from, that was from like two years ago.
Wait a minute, one, one of those, so the rec one up here, rec fund?
Yep.
That might be, what would, I just re- uh, refresh my memory here, but that has nothing to do with the monies that there were, you know, like the, um-
That's what I was trying to start to say earlier again.
So you think that's that, and that might be the Ball Field Fund number one?
What is that?
So, there were articles, when I started to say, there were articles for several years in a row, said that if they had excess budget money that they didn't spend, or excess revenues from registration fees, it went into this account and just continued to roll over. That's why I just need a week to get some details.
Well, no, no, and I, I, I don't know if that was my fault, cause I thought that number, that number was pretty close to that number, so.
Yeah, it could be one or the other. I know that the playground one dissolved itself, because that was especially the proper amount of time, right?
Okay, H Road, uh, Project Fund, uh, has fifty-four thousand as of June thirty. I assume you're still using that?
Yeah, that money's still good for, um-
Okay, same with County Road?
Yeah, they got paid this spring, but that will be, still-
But is it gonna, you think there'll be any more expenditures out of those two?
The only thing I gotta do on H Road is finish chop the trees up there.
County will be finished, finished?
Yeah, County will as well.
So County?
County's got a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
But this is as of June thirty, he's paid since-
Oh, you've done a lot of work.
So the, the bills haven't come in for that yet?
Well, they, this is as of June thirty. We've paid them in the current fiscal year. So we paid them in August, in August, July and August. This is as of June thirty.
Yeah, June thirty, yeah, okay.
Cemetery Fund, eleven thousand one thirty-six.
Alright, so this is the, this is the account that we're gonna do a little more research on. This is the account that, you know, can't find anything in town meeting books, we've gone back to, you know, the sixties. That's about where we've stopped, because everyone says that the cemetery account can only be spent on certain things for certain cemeteries, but Mark indicates that, I mean, we can't find any documentation on this. It has been on the books for, you know, it's said on the online, cemetery committee primarily. Mark says that most towns have an old cemetery account like this, and, um, they just spend it on cemetery-related things and, you know, so everybody can challenge it.
How much, how much of an operating budget do they have?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand last year.
Well, um-
I mean, this revenue is all in the rest.
We should just use this up over the next couple of years.
Yeah.
If you're going back to the sixties?
Yeah, we have gone back.
Uh, uh, look, uh, I think you've made a good effort, and I couldn't make anymore.
All right.
Any concerns about that?
Will you write your warrant articles in April, you can, whatever, whatever you decide to appropriate for the budget, you can offset the ministry.
Okay, uh, and these trust funds are Colsworth, Lawrence, and, uh, Denell's, those are all, um.
School scholarships.
School scholarship funds, okay, great. Um, it's funny, they don't really use them much of them.
That's gonna, well, I mean, depends on who applies, I, you get some, usually they'll go to apply for some, maybe one, so. I mean, I guess the best thing would probably be to ask the school.
Uh, they advertise these?
They do, I know, at least, I was there, I did one of these fellowships when I was in high school, I know that.
I knew we just.
Any student that goes to say that they have a universal application, and they automatically, um, wrap, or apply these to acting students, because we just, we're acting students, there are any students from acting, I know, like, there's some students who are genocidal, or are also eligible that were from acting.
Yeah.
Great. Where do you move on?
Um, is that all? So it sounds like the next is some research, and figuring out some of those specific questions.
Yeah.
Thank you for all of that, and we'll see how this turns out. Um, with that, we have nothing else on our business, for a new business, we have the, um, AWWA presentation. I think I mentioned folks that they reached out about a tour that we couldn't make it, so being invited them here to share a little bit more information about the work that you folks have done this year.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for having us tonight, I, I think some of you are familiar with the organization, uh, but just as like a brief recap, um, and thank you, Daniel, for inviting us tonight. So we're the Acton Wakefield Watershed Alliance, my name's John Balanoff, I'm the executive director, we work primarily in Wakefield and Acton. Um, I took over in twenty nineteen from Linda Shire, who was one of the founders, so our primary goal as a nonprofit in the region is to help protect water quality on the lakes and rivers in Wakefield and Acton. Uh, for environmental protection, but also for, you know, so, social reasons and economic reasons as well. The lakes are obviously a primary economic driver in the region, in addition to just being one of the, kind of key resources for our region, so we're founded in oh five to sort of help educate the community residents, students, et cetera, on the importance of keeping these resources clean, and providing technical and financial resources to help people keep them clean in the communities as well. Uh, so this year, we did celebrate our twentieth anniversary, and yeah, invited, uh, the selectmen to our twentieth anniversary celebration, and we do an annual tour of some of the projects we do, so our primary program is our Youth Conservation Corps program. So we hire, um, high school age students every year to do like lake friendly landscaping projects. We provide free landscaping designs geared towards mitigating stormwater erosion on the lakefront properties in the regions. We do site visits of homeowners, provide like direct guidance, uh, develop site plans, and then we will, you know, they can apply for our Youth Conservation Corps program, and the kids will go out and implement these landscaping projects. We don't charge for the labor, the homeowners just need to purchase the materials. So it gets the kids learning about environmental, environmental conservation, getting them first jobs, and also provides a low cost alternative for homeowners to implement these stormwater friendly projects, to sort of mitigate those runoff issues that do cause the primary pollution issues that lakes see in this region, you guys might have heard about some of the lakes experiencing cyanobacteria blooms. Um, specifically, you know, more so in Wakefield, like Province Lake, Pine River Pond have had those issues in recent years, but some of the lakes around here have as well. Um, stormwater pollution and erosion, as well as septic, dated septic systems are sort of the primary driver that causes those, causes pollution issues. Um, so, like I said, Youth Conservation Corps and these technical assistance designs we do are geared towards education mitigating that. Uh, in the wintertime, we also do, um, school, middle school science programs, so we go into like the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade classrooms. We've worked with Did Cody over at the Acton School for many, many years now. Um, sixth graders go on a field trip to the Province Lake Golf Course and learn about, you know, water bugs and macroinverberths, bioindicators, things like that. Seventh graders bring in well water samples, and they get to test their well water for, you know, different well water quality metrics. Um, then we do like a trout biology series with the eighth graders, where they get to raise trout eggs in the classroom, the program, it's their fishing game. Um, then they can do like a trout release day in April, where a fishing game gives us a designated stream where the kids can release the trout, and they go do a whole release and a habitat assessment, so. We're doing, you know, middle school science education in the winter, the actual landscaping in, you know, high school youth, uh, conservation program in summer. Um, we also do like watershed planning, and we get grants to do, you know, larger stormwater designs, working with road associations, boat launches, lake associations, to do, uh, larger projects geared towards, you know, these metrics. So, um, in the report, you guys should all have a copy of this, hopefully, I just provided some of the metrics from this year. Our Youth Conservation Corps crew did seventeen projects this summer on the lakes, seven of which were in Acton. Those stormwater designs, we did thirty of those, nine of which were in Acton. Um, and the metrics that we use to actually track our success are sediment reduction and phosphorus reduction. So sediment is like how much soil is washing into the lake, so these projects prevented sixty tons of sediment, according to our, our models, from getting into the lakes this year. And over twenty years, that number is more like six hundred tons, you know, prevented by the stormwater accumulation practices that we do. Uh, further in there, I just provided some maps, you can see, you know, the work we've done. Uh, second page here is the Salmon Falls Headwater Lakes, those are all the lakes that drain into the Salmon Falls River. And then the four northern lakes we work with, uh, are the ones that drain into the Saco River, so that just kind of shows the projects we've done, and then we provided some pictures of working, examples of some of the projects, we do things like, uh, rubber razors for stormwater diversion in driveways, infiltration pathways, dry wells, things like that, erosion control mulch and vegetated buffer planting. Um, and in the last page, I just provided some info about the school programs I mentioned, we work with about thirty students in Acton, uh, and about fifty-five to sixty students in Wakefield, so, um, uh, the town, both the town of Wakefield and the town of Acton do actually provide funding to our organization, uh, we've calculated that roughly a third of the shoreline that we work with is in Acton, two-thirds is in Wakefield, so our ask tends to kind of reflect that. Uh, Acton's been, uh, supporting us with twenty thousand dollars a year for the last several years, so we're very grateful for the support that you guys have offered, and, um, before that, you know, you've given us, I think, ten thousand-ish a year for many, many years before that to support these programs, so you've, you've sort of just.
What's Wakefield?
Wakefield, uh, is giving us forty thousand now, yeah, it was similar, there were, it was like fifteen, ten for a while. Uh, we bumped our ask up to four for them a few years ago, and twenty for Acton, and they both approved it, so. Uh, that actually allowed us to level up our staff, so I have a full-time program coordinator now that implements these programs, so I can move on to other grant opportunities and little bigger projects. And through a separate grant, we hired an outreach coordinator this year, Stacy, I'm gonna have her talk about a separate grant program very briefly, um, in a minute, but before I do, I have to answer any questions about the programs we do and provide any additional detail.
How many students, you said that you students come and do this work, how many do you have on average that?
Oh yeah, on the crew, the, what, the Youth Conservation Corps crew, so usually it's about a six-person crew with a crew leader. So the sixth crew are high school age kids, usually kids that live in the community, either lake residents or year-round residents. And then we usually have like a college age crew leader, that mans, that runs the crew every summer, they, it's an eight-week program. Um, so kids are getting paid, obviously, and we pay for that. Are, we're primarily funded by individual donors from the region as a nonprofit, we also get funding from lake associations and the towns, obviously, and until recently, we're getting federal dollars as well, but the federal grant program we use has actually gone away indefinitely. So we're gonna be relying more on local community funding for, for the foreseeable future.
So, I'm, I'm looking at, uh, there's a bunch of pictures here, and I'm, I'm looking at a strip line infiltration trench.
Oh, yep.
That, that's all on personal, that's on somebody's.
Uh, most of them are on residential, yeah, one of them, we, we've done a bunch of work on like the Province Lake Beach as well, which is still private, but it's more of like a public access point, so yes, it's usually residential property work.
These people call and ask you to do this, or do you go see them?
Um, it, it's, it's usually, you know, by, at, by this point, it's like a word of mouth business, so we do promote heavily on like social media, and we send emails out, you know, just reminding folks about the service, and then we get phone calls in the spring, folks ask us to come out and do a site visit, and we'll, we'll meet with them and, and do the site design, and then.
So a lot of this is on private property?
Uh, yeah, yeah, mostly on private property, unless we're working with the town on like a boat launch project, or, you know, we also send the kids around to do like boat launch cleanups all summer. Um, it is on private property, which is, you know, that's always been like an issue, an area of questioning or contention of like state grants and municipal grants and things like that, but the, the way we've sort of discussed it and explained it is that it's work being done on private property to service the public good, you know, the, obviously the water itself is owned by the state and benefits the state and the town through property values and, you know, economic driver and things like that. Keeping the lakes clean is essential for kind of keeping people around using the lakes, obviously. There's been a lot of examples of these lakes going green in the state, and then people kind of, there's like mass sellouts and property values drop and stuff, and we're kind of lucky that we've avoided that type of issue in this region, so it's kind of a prevention game still at this point.
What's, what's the total budget for your organization?
Uh, it varies a little bit year over year with the, the federal grants we get, but it's approximately three hundred thousand dollars a year. Yeah, two fifty to three hundred thousand, and that's gone up just in the last couple of years, just clearly managed to get a little more staff and some private funding from the Hampshire Charitable Foundation.
Do you do work on all of the lakes and ponds in Acton, or there's some you don't?
Uh, we, we don't do, um, Moutsum and Square, I don't know how much those, if those are fully in Acton, or I know they're partially in Chaplain.
They're shared with Chaplain.
Okay, yeah, so there's a separate organization, Acton Chaplain Youth Conservation Corps, that, that's sort of their neck of the woods. Um, they do Lune Pond too, but we've gotten calls, we've done a few projects on Lune Pond as well, so we do work on Lune Pond, Wilson, Horn Pond, Great East Lake, Level Lake, and Province, which is not actually in Acton.
So, uh, your organization, what you do is very similar to the ASYCC?
Uh, elements of it are similar, they have a, actually.
They have a boat inspection, I don't know, are you doing that?
We don't do the boat inspection, no, we do, um, like, in, on the New Hampshire side, that's a little more like catered towards like the actual lake associations run that independently, we sort of help them acquire, because it's, um.
It's a great idea.
Yeah.
I know where he's going.
Oh, no, I, I, I had a question for you, but keep going.
Okay, on the New Hampshire side, um, the lake inspe, the boat inspection program is run by a nonprofit called New Hampshire Lakes, so they're a private, they're a, a nonprofit versus, I think it may, it's the Courtesy Boat Inspection Program, which I believe is funded through the states, it's a slightly different model.
I see.
That they use, so we're not, we're not directly involved with that, the way ASYCC is. Um, do you, you have a question?
Yeah, so, we've got a, uh, we've got an article that we passed years ago, it's to help for private roads.
Article forty-three?
Yeah, you know what I'm talking about.
Yep.
So, uh, so what, what, we, at least I've been doing, I think, a whole board is.
We've talked about it, yeah.
Talked about it, what we're trying to do is we're trying to get the lake associations to take over the funds for the article forty-three.
To provide funds directly to that.
To kind of do what you're doing.
Okay.
You know, erosion, road, whatever, you know, and, uh, really hasn't, really been, it really hasn't taken hold yet. And, well, you know, myself would awa be interested in, in, you know, doing something like that.
Do you, you mean holding the funds?
So what it is, is we're, we're, the way we do it right now, only a couple, you know, we only got a handful of roads that qualify because of the way the state allows us to.
Right, yep.
Now, you're, you're going on, on private properties, you're doing all this work for whatever you're worried about, the lake qualities and this and that. And I'm thinking to myself, well, these private roads are the same problem.
Yep, yep.
What we're, what we're looking to do is have these lake associations, or even people like yourself, come to us and say, you know, we got all this road work, we like forty, fifty, or whatever, no, hopefully not that much.
Sometimes.
And we want to be able to have somebody delegate this money.
Yes.
Because, you know, I don't believe that these roads, there's certain roads that get in, and I'm sure it's working great for them, but it's not working for everybody.
Okay.
At all. I mean, the fraction, I think, uh, when Jay Ward brought in that list of roads, it was, it was minute fraction of mileage that was actually getting, you know, worked on with these funds because of the limitations that we're allowed to.
Okay.
And, and I was hoping that the road, the lake association would take over, we'd just give the money to them like we do anyways.
Yep.
To do that, but it really hasn't taken hold yet.
Yeah, I think they're obviously mostly volunteer organizations, so less capacity, but that's something that would be in our area of expertise in wheelhouse, so I'm not gonna commit to it right now, that'd be like a.
Yeah, no, no, I don't want to put you on the hot seat or anything, but.
Yeah, because there's like.
The hamster started doing burnouts, when you started, I started seeing, I started seeing, uh, uh, you know, you're working on private property and stuff, so.
Yeah, there's a, you know, there'd be an additional level of like scrutiny that I, you know, I want, it's, it's worth a conversation with the board to make sure.
Yeah, we're just, we're just looking for another way to make it legit.
Yep.
That everybody gets a piece of the pie.
Make it more equitable.
And, and frankly, like, from our perspective, like, camp roads tend to be the most concentrated sources of stormwater erosion and pollution. That's why I try to get those EPA grants to like, you know, when, when you need a bigger chunk of money, and you need to collaborate with a road association, and, you know, it's like, you gotta, that's usually those like hotspots.
I believe the town of Acton would spend more on that stuff if they knew it was getting spread out to more areas.
Okay, yeah, and, and we kind of, we do try to do, be a little scientific about it, we do watershed surveys with the lake associations every ten years, and that identifies every erosion source in the lake.
Your kind of soils used to give me once a year, what they call hotspots.
Okay, yeah.
They have, they have all the roads, and areas that had, you know, they'd be coated yellow, red, whatever. Okay, and those were the designated spots that we, we, we would concentrate as road commissioners, if those spots were on our roads, those are spots that we would concentrate on, and, you know, that, that's where I think on article forty-three, something like that, where you have all these spots that are, you know, bad, maybe same idea, um, red, green, blue, whatever.
Yep, okay, yeah, let, um, let's, I'll bring it back to like a board conversation, and then reach out to, you know, you can send me an email directly if you'd like, if you guys want to pursue it further, or I can, you know, um, but definitely, definitely maybe.
Okay.
Um, so just real quick, I'm gonna have Stacy come and talk about a new private grant funded program that we're, uh, working on, and then we can answer any questions together that you guys might have, but thank you.
Good evening, I'm Stacy Nerville, the new outreach coordinator at AWA. Um, and in front of you, you should have this pamphlet, this is our latest, uh, grant program. The New Hampshire Charitable Foundation provided AWA with a grant through their Great Bay twenty thirty program. Um, because the Salmon Falls watershed in this area actually is part of the Greater Great Bay watershed, so. Uh, yes, I think John fought to get us included in their funding opportunities. Um, so this program is promoting vegetated buffers along the shoreline. A vegetated buffer is just natural vegetation, shrubs, trees, plants along the shoreline. It acts as the last filter before the stormwater gets into the lake, it treats excess nutrients and pollutants. Um, and if you've been out on the lakes around here, you can see a lot of the development has ended with grass up to the lake or, um, just bare soils, there's a lot of bare soils around. And this is one way we can actually get people on board to be a part of solving some of these water quality issues. So what we're providing, because we have the background in providing design plans for stormwater control, we're, uh, providing planting plans. So people interested in the program can give us a ring, staff will go out, assess their property, and come up with a vegetated buffer planting plan, and we'll provide them, um, five hundred to a thousand dollars depending on what their project encompasses, so, uh, there's something called no mow, if you stop mowing part of your lawn and let it grow naturally, we'll give you five hundred dollars. Um, we'll receive five hundred dollars for a planting project that costs up to a thousand, and then anything over a thousand will reimburse you five hundred dollars for. So the one big caveat with this program is it's not exactly like the Youth Conservation Board, because we are not doing the work besides coming up with a design plan and reimbursing. Um, and this program definitely is something we're trying, you have to educate, obviously, the lake community to get the buy-in, and then you sweeten it up with this deal, um, and so we're trying to get the word out there, speaking to the communities, um. Social media is big, it, uh, we're connected to all the lake associations on social media, so it's trying to promote it that way, and even reaching out, uh, within the lakes themselves, picking out properties that may benefit. We also wanted to make it a very positive program, no pointing fingers, but, um, basically just telling people they may have the opportunity to join this program. Any questions?
People call you first, and you go to a site mark, and you design for them?
Yes.
How much is the worth of it?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
How much is the worth of it?
What's the total grant, uh, amount for this?
The, the whole grant itself, so, it was from the New Hampshire, New Hampshire Charitable Foundation, it's a seventy, it's actually a seventy thousand dollar annual grant. Um, but, uh, and well, they, they conditionally approved one year, and they said if it goes well, you'll get two more years. Um, forty of that was just to fund the outreach coordinator position to help promote the program.
Can those grounds be used on main properties?
Yes, they can, uh, because the, um, the Salmon Falls Headwater Lakes are Wilson, Horn Pond, Great East Lake, uh, Level Lake, so even though it's, I mean, Great Bay itself is in New Hampshire, but the Salmon, Salmon Falls is the head water, one of the head water rivers, so they basically, work that gets done on the main side is still gonna ultimately benefit water quality in the Salmon Falls River and Great Bay, so. Even though it's a bit of a stretch, I have a way with words, I convince them, you know, it's benefiting, down here, down south, the water flows down. Even though it's a bit of a stretch, I have a way with words, I convince them, you know, it's benefiting down here, down south, the water flows downstream. Um, so yeah, but the grant was to, I basically got twenty thousand dollars to put directly towards the cost share grant, and then the rest is to fund staffing and outreach, and that's why we could hire another staff person, and going towards my time for the design work and stuff, so. With the twenty thousand dollars, the grants are gonna be between five hundred and a thousand, which means we can do twenty to forty of these a year in the region. Um, and I'm hoping to make it a free year program, and then if it's successful, to find other funding sources to keep it going, and it's, it was a way to fill in the gap, because when you have erosion sources, we can send the YCC, but sometimes you've got just like lawn, there's no obvious erosion, but there's still gonna be sheet flow. Or, you know, also, it's a great geese deterrent, because geese love walking right out of the water on the flat lawns, they don't like wading through grass where they can't see predators on the other side, so it's, it's got extra benefits to homeowners, even if you don't just care about blooms and fish and, you know, and bugs and stuff like that, so.
So you give five hundred bucks not to mow the lawn?
Yeah, basically.
Is that for the summer, or are they like?
It's, well, it's, I mean, it's basically supposed to be a permanent buffer, so it's gonna die off in the winter, obviously, but it's supposed to just ultimately end up being a no-mow zone, and it might just be like five foot deep or whatever, depending on the size of the property, so like I'll do the design specific to the property, based on how big it is. If you only have ten feet from your house, it's gonna mean something, and if your house is a hundred feet back and you've got a massive lawn, it might look a little, well, Matt will do as much as we can and make sure it works, but yeah.
People actually do that?
What?
They actually, you pay them, you know, if people actually call them?
We've approved three so far, yeah.
I mean, most everybody in our lake, they, they love their lawn.
They love their lawn, yeah, that's why.
Usually legally, you know, they, they wouldn't want to mow it.
Yeah, I know, well, right, it's more work, and like, you can still keep a lawn area, it's, the, the idea is to kind of minimize the lawn area to what you need, to enjoy, hang out, whatever, and then just keep that barrier on the, on the water's edge to protect the lake, so. Supposed to kind of meet people where they're at, it's not like lawn shaming, too much. If people wanna come up to their camp and mow their lawn, more power to them, like, I wouldn't, but, um, but if we can kind of find that compromise, and yeah, but the idea was to have a minimum, so it's, it's not just like, it's like it's five hundred to a thousand, so if the project only costs three hundred bucks, we're still gonna give it the five hundred, cause I figured, less than that, it's a tough, it might be a tough sell, if you really love your lawn, but maybe five hundred minimum, and yeah, if you just agree to a no-mow, or do like a native overseeding, and just let like little blue stem and the native grasses grow up, five hundred bucks, or if you wanna get fancy and do a two thousand dollar landscaping project, then we'll give you the up to a thousand dollar maximum, so.
Right.
That's the idea, or it's kind of an experiment, we wanna see if it works, but promote it far and wide, scum the money, see who bites, and yeah, it's exciting, it's like, it's our newest. So we're, we're still trying to grow and come up with new ideas and ways to close this gap, despite kind of the like, we're getting a little pinched from like the federal grant funding side, but I don't, like, we've built so much momentum in the last few years, that I wanna keep this stuff going and see if we can switch over to these private funding sources that have less rules too, so there's benefits to private funding source as well, less reporting, less tracking, that kind of stuff, so. Um, anyway, this is the kind of stuff that you guys are also supporting just by continuing to help us out, so, thank you.
Any other?
Thanks for coming.
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thanks a lot.
Thank you, very exciting.
Sarah, I was just sitting here thinking, you know, those emails back and forth, and.
I, I appreciate it, it's always exciting to learn more about the life that's been done.
Okay, yeah.
And found, and just what we have available, so, thank you for coming.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you.
And for your patience and gent, and both of you, but all that, emails back and forth.
And yeah, those cuts were, you know, for, those are just given out at our twentieth anniversary celebration, so feel free to take a moment outside.
It's like hiking or something. Um, okay, perfect. Um, next, um, under new business, twenty-five, twenty-six budget timeline.
So, um, I've handed you a document that we don't really need to go into in great detail, just want you to kind of review it, um, it was, um, Tom's requested to, the treasurer and I, that we put something together and get the process going a little sooner, make sure we had ample time for everything we needed to do. So that's in front of you, and it will be in the old business next week.
My favorite time of the year, budget season.
My only question, I guess, without this would be, um.
We can't wait.
Did, did we talk with the school about?
We haven't done anything, because I usually go through the board first, if you're okay with it, I'll check with the school, but you tell me you don't like that day, then I tell the school for nothing.
Yeah.
So, uh, we're still talking about April eleventh, the town meeting?
Oh, gosh.
That's just how it fell.
I mean, it kind of like snowed every year so far, so.
Well, let me take it from now. Take it up, Tom, Tom, April.
Something happened the year before too, I know it did.
You know, as long as we get the budget, you know, that's what's important to me, when the meeting is.
It just felt the weather.
The power was out.
We had, everybody was out of power for almost two weeks, the first one, and then the second one, we couldn't force it.
But even, even without, we had a decent turnout, we're not gonna have a nice day with the turnout.
We're not gonna have a nice day.
Whatever timeframe gets the biggest turnout is fine with me. I'm the green doctor.
I don't care, if it snows, we'll all be there.
Doesn't matter to me.
I'm just, just be there while you're.
You know, by the time weather gets nice and we're doing or not, yeah, it's probably not.
You don't wanna do it May, you don't wanna do it May, I mean, David wants to do it.
No, I just push it off a week.
One week?
Cause it, it, the last couple of years, the second week of April, it snowed.
It's spring break, it's spring break, it's gonna go after that.
I'm just talking to the school, they don't want to get out.
Yeah, they're.
I'm in, I'm in February eleven.
They, they kinda set it for us.
But, uh, the fourth meeting here is February fourth, the board's selecting sign up for the budget, so.
Yeah.
That's the idea. Not wanting to have forgotten.
And then we'll talk about it again until.
And then it just sits.
Yeah, keep it a day on it, it's gonna run into too many other things, you get spring break.
I, I just said that.
No, I'm, I'm hoping it doesn't snow that way.
We'll do a, a reverse snow dance the night before.
Yeah, there we go.
All right, I'll be back to that.
We'll figure it out. But thank you, uh, Jennifer, oh.
Just. So with the budgets this year, are we doing like we did last year, like give them to you, then what?
We haven't, the board hasn't made a decision, so that's timeline and step one, you'll.
All right.
I'll let you know.
We'll make sure the process is very clear, Jennifer, we'll have everything organized, which she always does.
If they tell me, I'll tell you.
Uh, thank you, so next we have, I'm gonna say this as well, scope of work.
So in front of you, and it is two-sided.
Ooh, that's a.
You have a scope of work, um, one is for Seventh Street cleanup ditches, and does that say plunge pools at the end of the road?
Yeah, the, um, two years ago, Adam Oliver got a, did a grant with, uh, the York County Soil and Water. Um, they put the ditches in, there's two big plunge pools at the end of the road, and, uh, it works great every year, but you have to go in and clean it out and everything, that was like part of the agreement with the grant, so. We did it last year. We were going, uh, so we did it last year, and we kind of gotta do it every year, cause it's a plunge pool. There's two of them right there, there's somebody's yard right there, so we don't want the sand going into the yard and everything, so, um, that's the first one.
He's got that one estimated at fifty-five, seventy-four, change?
Mm-hmm, and then, um, second.
How often do you do this on this road?
Yeah, we do it every year, and that was, that was part of the agreement with, uh, York County Soil.
I don't think you're coming to us last year?
Yeah, we did it last year.
Yeah, I don't think he detailed it probably, I, maybe he did.
Adam did, I think Adam did it two thousand twenty-three, and then I, the agreement was that we clean it out every year, clean the ditches out.
Is there anything that can be done to avoid having to do this?
Yep.
And not take the grant on it?
Stop putting sand on it.
On the.
Yeah, I, we just, that was the agreement.
What was that?
What was that?
Ken, if you have a comment, please come to the podium.
I mean, we just.
You just took, if it's annual, fifty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think, it's, it probably just take a day, I think it only took a day last year, I just. Well, you got it down for twenty hours, that's. Yeah, you said, we, I just, I'm just guessing here, that's all I do with these things.
You get my point, though.
Yeah, I, I, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't agreement with York County Soil and Water.
I don't know what a, a, a plunge pool is, and, and, I, I don't need to, I guess my question is, if we're gonna be spending fifty-five hundred dollars a year on maintenance on the road, is there anything that can be done, you know, perhaps a little, little bigger scope that can eliminate this issue?
Just gets filled up with road sand every year. Yeah, then there's two driveways, and it runs out of two driveways, and we have to, we have to address that, we gotta make the ditch a little deeper, that was, that was the biggest. It, it, well, the ditch is still gonna fill up, cause the driveway dumped into that ditch. Yeah, we don't even sand the road.
Is that what it is, the washing, sand, you sand off the driveway and do the ditch?
Well, they're, they got dirt driveways going up.
Oh, I see.
And what happens, a big rain comes out and fills the ditch up every now and then, and, uh, you know, I mean, it's just maintenance, but you just put on, clean it up, but just, it sounds like you got twenty hours to clean up, you say a day's worth of job? A day and a half, oh, I think it took a day and a half last year to do it.
And, uh, the second one here is eight road, is this the same thing?
The ditch is stationed, the go, the walking trail ditching.
Is this again an annual thing that we do?
No, this is just regular, I haven't done it in a couple of years.
Oh, okay.
This is just regular, yeah, that's.
So what is it, what are you doing on this, we're just ditching? Hmm? I was just asking, are you gonna explain this one, or just?
Yeah, it's just, um, there's two spots, like where the walking trail is, that whole ditch line is washed out, and the water comes out of the orchard there, which is at the just main, there's a ditch and just cleaning it up, and then there's a couple of ditches going down the hill by the dump that just get filled up with sand every year, and just clean them out. Are you planning on doing, you know, we've talked about putting curb in or something on that hill over a period of time, is that still on your to-do list? Uh, with the eight road, now with my plan, I hopefully, probably won't be this coming year, but at some point, I have a plan, I'll, I have my five-year paving plan, I'll, I'll. Samborn, where part of that? Uh, Samborn, yeah, Samborn, I believe is the next year, yeah. Cause it's getting pretty bad down the dip. I think if I looked at my, uh, plan, I believe Samborn Road is next year, well, it's coming next year, so. Okay, um, oh, by the way, the Winter Lane sign's gone, same night the, uh, speed thing's got jaded a lot, the Winter Lane sign is probably posted in someone's garage now, but the sign isn't. Lean in, just feel like, you know, we're talking about this, so, um, so you, you, this year, more of what you think it's gonna take to do, yeah? Yeah, we didn't tell you, it was a day and a half last year. Oh, I'm talking about eight road. Oh, yeah, 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 that one, yeah, that one, yeah. Yeah, okay, okay, so you're not gonna see that number anyways.
Okay.
Right, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, Seventh Street and the Eight Road projects.
Okay, a discussion, uh, on the table. Motion to pass it, per. Thank you, Will. Next, under new business, we have AP invoice discussion.
I'll come right back to that, Will.
So we received an email, um, which I reported to the board, um, we did have an error on our end, we inadvertently missed the invoice, um, I don't know if you've seen it, if you've already read it, or.
Yeah, I read it.
Um, so it just says, uh, "Good afternoon, uh, due to an error this week with processing my invoices, I did not receive payment for invoice twenty-three fifty. Please arrange to have a check available for pickup by noon on Tuesday, nine-two, so I can get the money to the bank. I believe at this time we need to simplify invoicing process for subcontractors. For example, having to create three separate invoices for work week is creating possibilities for more errors to occur. Whether the said invoices are overlooked in this place or lost, going forward now would be a great time to go back to having the ability to email invoices directly to the treasurer. Thanks, Chris Langley, Operations Manager." Um, so I wanted to, we did reply, um, but I figured the board, if you wanted to change any processes, um.
Well, first of all, if someone sends an email, and that should have been directed to you, you're the one who hires that company, right? Yeah, I, I don't email the company. But, yeah, but what I'm saying is, he's a vendor, they're vendors, you're not, you're, you're, you're an elected official town employee, correct? Yeah. Okay, uh, having a vendor tell us how we're gonna pay our bills is probably not the, not the best way to do it, um. There is some changes, I like, I, I would like to make those, your, your time currents, um, it's, it's, well.
I gave everyone, I made more comments, Ken, I didn't wanna pop the frames of the door.
So, we can't be sending, we can send the email, the invoices directly to the treasurer, it still has to go to you. You have to sign off on it. That's why I do what I do, I, I, we, I, we had this conversation a couple of years ago, so I print everybody's off Sunday night, I sign them all, I put them in my, the treasurer's mailbox on Monday. So, I don't, what, what, what does Chris wanna? I am, I am.
It says going forward would be a great time to go back.
He's asking if we just could email them, instead.
You mean, have to you sign them?
Yeah, cause we used to email them all the time.
So they all go to, so you, not him, you wanna email your signed coded invoices directly to the treasurer?
Well, I think he's asking if we could just email them.
Well, I know, but I'm trying to understand the difference, cause his invoices go to you, right, I gotta make, his invoices go to you.
Right, that's right, that's what I told him, I said, I have to sign them every week, so this works fine, this, this.
Right, yeah, so are, are you asking if you can send your signed coded emails to?
No, cause I, I can't do that, cause I have to come here on Mondays anyway. Okay, so you're, you're, find the way it is, uh. Yeah, I, I have to do it, I have, usually every week I have to come, I, as a vendor, send me bills, I have to come there. Yeah, okay, well, we're, I guess there's confusion here, because it sounds like they were.
We're not sure what he's asking, we're trying to help, I don't know what he's asking.
Oh, well, just leave it the way it is, okay, it's fine. Well, it's not, it's not fine, because it's, it's, so when the issues are brought up, it's like, I'm looking at it, it's like, um, and I, I, so I, I'm a little confused, like usual, where is the, you have the tuffie?
Yeah, no, I don't have a lot of it.
No, no, I wanted the, uh, that one, oh, wait, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
This is what they're looking at, if you want to see, they just have an example.
So, I guess he was also concerned about the, uh, projects and the vendors having to keep track of different projects. Was that, that wasn't else, wasn't it?
No, I ju- I read you the full email, um, simplify the invoicing process for the subcontractors, for example, having to create three separate invoices for the work week is creating.
Which are project related.
Yeah, okay, it's a project related, and so, so, um, that would be something you'd be doing anyways, not the vendor. Right, I, I just, I take everybody's mail, and I, I have my sheet there, and I.
Hey, Will, Will, can I, are you aware of this email, or, that has come to us, cause it sounds like you aren't? Haven't, haven't seen it or discussed it with.
No, I just don't understand what happened last week, I guess, no, I don't, because I had a timesheet with twenty-five hours left in it.
Yeah, the AP got missed, it was attached to payroll and it just got missed, it was a human error.
Well, I don't, why, why attach everybody's thing to each project, I guess? But flipping through, she missed it.
Yeah, we just missed it.
Wow, I, I don't know how.
The treasurer and the town initiator have so many things, and this is the first.
No, I, no, I'm just saying, I.
No, it just for clarity, I mean, we had, we are, we are cross-training on payroll and AP, and the, and we are cross-training, and when the cross-training was done, the individual missed it.
Oh, yeah, that's all I just.
Yeah, we just missed the AP, the warrant, that's, I mean, that bill, there's no other way that, you know, that's the truth.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, I paper flip like each individual project, I paper flip everything.
It was gonna be, Will.
Right, the payroll was processed, we thought we separated AP and payroll, the person filling in was only doing payroll, she missed the AP.
It's not, nothing you did, it was just.
No, that's what I'm, we missed it, which I think we told you.
So now that we're, we're looking at this, you know, I'm trying to figure out, now, you know, you got, you got vendors working for you, correct?
Yeah.
Cole, um, Langley Escavation is a vendor.
Yeah.
Right, um, there's other ones that also work for you, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, uh, I'm, I was looking at the, I'm looking at the, uh, payroll here, and so you've got this whole page dedicated to, uh, Langley Escavation right here.
Mm-hmm.
Do the other, do the other, uh, vendors have that page too? No, I just, we've always done it. Well, but that was before we went all straight subcontractor, right? We, I, we've always done that one. Okay, well, I'm just, I'm just, it doesn't make any sense why Langley Escavation has a whole page with all their stuff, but when everybody else sends their bills in, they just get a little thing and they just show them, I'm out. We, that's how we've always done it. I know, but. We've never had a problem, so I, I didn't, I never. Well, no, but doesn't, it just, doesn't make any sense, right?
If, if we're asking for that level of detail for one, why wouldn't we get it from everything?
Okay, we, we can, we want. Well, no, I, I don't believe that, cause honestly, uh, I'm, I'm not questioning anybody's intelligence, but there's, most of people in this room aren't gonna figure that out anyways. Right? Yeah, I mean, we've, we've done them since twenty eighteen, we've done. Yeah, so what I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying is, back in twenty eighteen, or, or when I was real pushing, which was twenty eighteen, okay, we were employees of the town back, so that's why you had to do all this, okay? Uh, we're now, we're getting invoices now from, from say, uh, Langley Escavation for this much money, it's already got a description of the hours and all the rates, right? Do we, do we wanna do the extra sheet, I mean, it. I just, I don't believe that we, I, I, so what I would like to see is, you know, Langley Escavation, this is that, you know, we can go back to that page, it's all glued to the same payroll sheet, right? So, uh, but everybody should be doing the same thing.
Right, right, you mean with a, with an invoice?
Yeah, so, you know, you, on the bottom of your invoice here, it shows at the bottom, oop, I'm upside down here, so you, Langley Escavation here with all your hours, this and that, but then down here, you'll have people like, uh, Cole, and that, and that, you just put them out, correct? Right, yeah. Yeah, you don't put the detail you do here. No. So, either we do it like that for everybody, or we just say, okay, cause everybody's a subcontractor now, there's no employees. Right. So when the, the billing comes out, you know, maybe what we should be doing is putting Langley and son, whatever, uh, um, this much for that invoice. You could put the, uh, the account number for the project that you're working on, and we can simplify this whole. for the project that you're working on, and we can simplify this whole process by doing that, the only person that we'd have to have an hourly day would be you.
Right, like the dog.
Yeah, right?
Right.
And, but one thing I.
I, I think I'm following this, uh, we have approved rates.
Yep.
That, uh, are for various types of equipment, and.
Oh, okay.
Those are hourly rates, and so, I, I'm trying to think what information we want in the invoice, we wanna know what the project is. We wanna know, uh, what the equipment and the rate is, and how, and how many hours associated with that, right? Uh, so we know the project, we know the detail, I mean, you're an employee, so you're doing basically a timesheet, right?
Yeah, you want timesheet.
Yeah, so I guess so long as we have that detail, but we're not, does everyone provide that?
Well, that, well, that's one thing we, that's one thing that, what I would suggest him to do for us, you know, to re, well, we're gonna, I would require it.
Yeah.
Is, I, you know, the way you guys do your, your, uh, your billing is fine, it tells, you know, it doesn't say where you worked, which, that's the only concern I have.
Yeah, we need another.
Yeah, it should say on that.
It does, first, first line, they have. Yeah, same page, but, um, but it doesn't say on this one.
We've also asked him, we've also asked him to start attaching these approved scope of works, so that you have that on there.
But, but what I'm, what I'm trying to get to is this, it, it just may, it looks funny that all this stuff here is done this way, but then when the other vendor do it, it's another way.
So we have one format for Langley, um, subcontractor, and another format for all the other subcontractors.
Because the other subcontractors are different.
We are not doing them all.
So you're saying that he does, you have a preference, so he can get rid of this altogether, as long as he's got a detailed invoice?
So, yeah, so the detailed invoice, just like, you know, they give us, gives us the hours.
Right.
And the treasurer can look at it and go, yeah, okay, well, that's how the, that's the right rate.
Yeah.
Okay, the only thing that I don't like is the description, what, 'cause I wanna see a front page like this, now, I always go back to mine, because mine, I don't wanna introduce all this, well, mine was a little bit more condensed, but when you do do all this, and then you have the vendors, now you're just all vendors here, okay, uh, there should be a description from you, not from the vendor, of what, what's being done, that's what I wanna see, that, we, we wanted that so that we could figure out projects and this and that.
Yeah, I usually always, like, if I have another contract, I always make sure they put on their bill, like where they work, what they're doing, and usually, on my timesheet, on my own, if you look at the back, it's work performed, I always, usually write a little description, but I can put it on, on the.
But what I'm saying is, if you looked at one of my old ones, right, it would show all this, which was smaller, then you go down, it would say Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and it have a description of exactly where, every, who worked and when. Okay, so that, so Joe Schmo goes to the, uh, books, they want to see, you know, start planning out and try to figure out where all money's going, they can go, they don't have to go through ten pages to find your time card back here. You know, at least they know, because they don't, they should be able to see what you did that week on that one page, that's why I think it simplifies it, does that make any sense?
Yeah, that, that's fine.
Get rid of all this stuff here, I already talked to Lauren about it, we told her we were gonna talk, well, I hadn't talked to you guys about it really, a whole lot, so, but I just think that simplifies the process, 'cause when you got so many vendors working, and then it just makes everything.
So you would have just at the top of it, the list of the vendors that matches the invoices that he submitted?
Yes.
It's just the way the fire department has it?
Same thing as the fire department, except I wanna see the days that they worked, a description of exactly what they did, who did it, and, uh, you know, that way there, we're, we're trying to, you know, so when people go back and look at these, they know exactly where the money went.
Yeah, that's fine.
And that, the projects too, and I think the, the capital projects, we did ask, 'cause you, you was talking about multiple, three, three different time cards, I don't know what the vendor would be doing that for, the vendor should be only doing for where it worked.
Right, I always make them break it up, like, if they work in separate places, I, I ask them to separate bills, because I always.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, that, that's, that's perfectly fine.
Right, and then the treasurer.
Because it makes it easy for you to make that report card for us, to show you where you worked.
Right, well, it's easier for, there's not calling and all this stuff.
Yeah, okay, fine, I'm good with that. You guys, you know, what are you doing?
I think it makes sense.
Yep, shows us everything, we don't need, we don't need that sheet.
I mean, the plow, in the plow, right, where somebody, say, uh, Cole sends you a bill for plowing, do you put it down hourly, this, that, no, you put one amount on the bottom.
No, no, on our winter sheets, I broke them out every week.
You did?
On the bottom, oh, yeah, there, there.
All the, all the, all the vendors?
Everything, like back and excavators, farm mowers, like J Brock, each one would be in its own paragraph, and have like six real plow parts, I break the hour, one time, I break the hour, and.
You don't, you don't need to do that, do it the way we were doing.
Right, but we only have ever done that, 'cause it's what we've done, and we've never had the conversation change, man, I.
Well, no, the, I mean, we probably wouldn't even have thought about it, the email, I'd make a plan about it, so, it probably wouldn't have been an issue.
One follow-up question is, is that the appropriate process, if something happens like this, for them to contact the treasurer, is it appropriate for the vendor to contact the road commission?
He's gonna hire it, hire the vendor, I think you should be going to the, the road commissioner first.
And then have them, if any.
I don't, I don't even want the vendors going in there.
Well, that's, that, that was one of my issues, just a little bit with the wording of that, you know, I thought it was a little rude, and this is toward the vendor, but I, I wanna make sure there's a proper protocoling, but they know what the process is if something happens, and I think, I think it makes sense.
Whenever I had an issue with the vendor, the vendor would call me and say, why didn't I get paid, or what, my job was to go to Michelle, whoever, at the time, and I straightened it out, 'cause that was my job.
And I, I think that's.
You get the vendor in the middle there, that, that don't usually work out well, and it didn't really work out well.
See, the thing is, I don't think the town's gonna do anything at the request of a vendor without talking to you anyways, so that's why it's appropriate for everything to come to you, we're just not gonna act based on what vendor says.
Just making sure that.
So do you want me to go in and meet Lauren and fix the sheet?
Yeah, we'll look at the form, we'll make sure that he has, that they review it wrong, sentence, yeah, we're just gonna update it, so you don't have to do that, break down page.
And then just making sure.
And then it's, then it's, I'm concerned they should go through you.
This is gonna be a lot easier for you to do, this is gonna, this is gonna be like really, really easy to do, and it's gonna take a little longer than the description, that's all. Easy.
Pipe it up.
All right, thanks, please.
Um, next, under new business, we have tree removal.
So, um, last week, I proposed to you guys that the, uh, uh, Mr. Dennis, who's been doing our, our great work out there, uh, asked, uh, told me that there's a dead maple tree out there, and it's dead, and, uh, like I said, I went out there, I hadn't noticed it, you know, but, uh, but the beech trees also have some dead hangers coming off and this and that, so, um, you know, he said he'd come up and cut it, and this and that, I said, well, give us a price of doing it, and, uh, and grinding down the stump and everything, and he has done so, exactly what in here do you have?
I have two thousand dollars.
Two thousand bucks, I think that's a smoking deal, especially for what he's done.
All the stumps and everything, yeah.
And, uh, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve that. As random.
Okay, on, any discussion about that, all in favor? Thank you. Um, and with that, we are out of new business, pending, we have tractor station.
Yeah, there's nothing suspending.
And, wrap it up, we have public comment, does anyone who has any public comment? Once, twice, okay, um, I will adjourn motion.
Make a motion, we adjourn?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay, meeting adjourned.